All in order to the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, May the 19th. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, we will lead in prayers this evening by Isaac Folkes from Victory Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for a land where we have the freedoms to be governed by the people. And I thank you for the city of Greenwood and the people that you have put in authority. I ask that you would give them abundant wisdom, strength, and peace as they seek to make priority calls and decisions in general. I ask that you guide them as they do that. I pray for Linda, for Mike, for Ezra, for Michael, for Terry, for David, for Steven, and for Samuel, that you guide them as they deliberate. And I thank you for their leadership. Once again, I thank you for the wisdom that you freely give to those that pass before it. It's a Christ in my prayer. Amen.
Thank you. Maybe she did. Roll call.
Campbell.
Here.
Gibson. Here. Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Batch. Is that so? Lexi. Is that so? Mancha. Here. No.
Here.
And Williams.
Here.
Do you have a forum? All of you should have received copies or minutes for the last regular meeting of May the 5th. Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Moan, second. Second, Mr. Hopper. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? And then roll call in a minute.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Mancha. Aye.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of seven to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Corporation Council has nothing to report.
Anybody a controller at this time?
Nothing at this time.
All of you should have received my report from the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Any other committee or board reports? Right, we do have a request this evening to move Resolution 2509 forward to on the agenda. So I'm going to entertain a motion to move Resolution 2509 to the present spot on the agenda. Motion of Mr. Moan, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Right, Resolution 2509 is on the floor now, so.
A resolution of the Common Council selecting build, operate, transfer, developer, fire station design and construction sponsored by Moan.
All right, this is scheduled for a public hearing. Open up for a public hearing. If you're here tonight and wish to speak for or against Resolution 2509, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. The petitioner can wait until after the public hearing if he wishes. Anybody? All right. Close the public here. Mr. Wright.
Good evening. Regret City Controller. So you may recall, the second half of last year, this council passed a resolution to allow us to undertake what's known as a build, operate, and transfer, or BOP, process to design and build the new fire station, Station 95, that'll be going out on the southeast side of the city. One of the advantages, one of the main advantages to this process is that the price is a guaranteed maximum. And then that means no change orders, no issuing bonds or something that then being short because change orders come in for unexpected things. So this, this process we've been going through, I think we started probably just July or August of last year. And we've been going through, first we did an RFP. The team selected access for the architect at Myron Agent for the construction site of that, based on their proposal. And so now we are at the point where the design is done. The prices have all been presented to us and we do have a guaranteed maximum price for this project. That guaranteed maximum is $15,443,388. The chief is going to kind of describe everything that we're looking at, but this will end up being a total of three buildings out there. So I think the chief probably got some drawings from the architects and will let him kind of describe what we're getting from that.
Good evening, Council. Jayden Washington, Fire Chief. I'm here tonight to speak about the future Station 95 site with its features and why it's needed. Station 95 is designed not only to meet our needs now, but will enable us to meet the needs of a future program, 30 years from now. It will allow for future apparatus, future additional crews, for future growth. We also will thank ourselves at least for the future, or someone else will, for thinking and planning ahead accordingly. It also will meet our current spatial challenges we currently experience and allow us to meet much-needed live-fire training with additional, with the addition of a live-fire training building. The site will house three buildings that are designed for specific uses, but also allow the expansion of much-needed programs such as a central wash station, firefighter cancer prevention protocols, which are now best practice, in the fire service. It will also allow us to add much-needed storage for fire gear, equipment, and apparatus. It will also allow for onsite practical evolution training as well as faster mobility for the training of our increasingly new and less experienced firefighters. Our department has grown from 62 full-time firefighters to 86 full-time firefighters at the end of this year. That's an amazing thing. We're very blessed to have that, but it does present some challenges. Approximately 70% of our firefighters have less than five years of experience, and over 30 of those 86 have less than one year of experience better this year. The station is also going to be much-needed as we pass the SS levy in order to have this station in it, in order to have additional firefighters that will be housed at this station. The only way I know to combat the experience challenge is to train and to train on live-fire situations a lot. This building will allow us to have unlimited fire, live-fire training versus in the past what we've had as acquired structures, which can be dangerous and oftentimes there's a lot of red tape with IEDM and some other things that go along with that. It also can be a nuisance to, if it's close to roads, there are various things like that. So, and we can do it in a controlled setting, keeping our firefighters safe while getting great hands on experience. This experience transfers to the fire ground producing better outcomes for our citizens and our visitors. The area surrounded Station 95, site is currently experiencing and will continue to experience rapid growth. Our call volume correlates with this growth that Greenwood is experiencing. Example of this call volume from just a few years ago, with approximately 6,208 calls in 2020, 7,321. And to this year, we are on pace currently to be over 10,000 calls. Calls are going up at a steady rate of approximately 7% to 8% annually. We've been tracking this now for a little over two years. We fully expect this trend to continue. We have heat maps that we've created from our data that indicates Station 95 is needed and it will ease the burden from current stations and will facilitate better response times for all station districts because resources would not be needed to be pulled from those districts to mitigate the mercy calls in that area, keep us ready for mercy calls in their current districts. So it keeps us in position, so to speak, for better outcomes. I understand the cost of $15,443,388 is a lot, but I will also confirm from area fire chiefs and through my own experience in Wilmington, that this is on point with the price point and price with my experience. Thank you, Council.
Questions?
One other thing I did want to describe our plans for the funding of this project. As it stands, the initial funding for the construction would come from the sanitary sewer utility. This is so we could save on interest costs. And then once the building is complete and turned over to us, we would then have the RDC issuing bonds out of the Mooresville Road tip to reimburse the utility for funding the front end of the project. The benefit there is that we'll have a few more amendments rolling off in that tip. So that tip is really serving to do very well for us. Additionally, the hope would be that interest rates would come down a little bit more before we get to the point where we issue it. So that is our intent for this project, for the funding, and that will be RDC back at the end of the day.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Thank you very much. All right, this is time for public comments. If you're here tonight and wish to address the council concerning an item that is on tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right, ordinance is resolutions, notice and consider ordinance number 2513.
An ordinance to amend the text of ordinance 20-29, Unifying Development Ordinance, Article 25, various sections regarding semi-verification, use tables, special exception standard, fences and screens, accessory structures, building design and standards, signs and glossaries, sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion? Yeah, a motion. Mr. Hopper, second, by Ms. Gibson. And Mr. Nelson.
Hi, Council. I did pass out a sheet of paper before we started. This was a proposed amendment to the text amendment set. My staff is proposing that receive the 8-0 recommendation from the Advisory Plan Commission. The amendment is for privacy fence gates, that they must not swing outward across pedestrian or cycling infrastructure. And that would be for Section 100309, fences and screen, letter A, number four.
I remember a request for an amendment to.
And there's one more amendment, sorry. And also Section 10-03-14, P number 19, in the residential building design standards table. Number 19, the first version, the trim, trim shall conform. The wood trim was missing. And it left everyone with a question on what was conforming.
All right, so we have two proposed amendments, one about privacy fence gates and the other one adding the word trim. Do you have a motion?
Sure. Well, can I ask a question first before, so, before I make a motion, just in case there's one more, I want to make it cool. I have you. All right, so the general design numbers three and four. So it says the front building elevation may contain attached garage, visible garage doors, provided that the proportion of the front building elevation, the single finger structure put into the attached garage shall not be greater than 60% of the width of the front of the elevation. And then it says 50% for ranch homes. So I assume that means that a ranch home, 50% can be garage, 50% can be the rest of that elevation, right? Because on a ranch home, when you say elevation on a ranch, I don't say front, right?
So, yes, there are, there are two different things happening here in three and four.
Right, and that brings me to four. Why does it say 60% on four if we just said in three, it can only be, that's what I'm trying to figure out before.
Yeah, this is one that we've broken apart from. It used to be one large paragraph about garages, and what we've done is we've broken this apart. So it's talking about the.
Is one just the garage door and the other one's the garage plus the little, what, maybe a surrounding area or?
So one is the garage area on the home. If you take the entire surface area of the front elevation, and the other is talking about the width of the garage in proportion to the home. So number three is 60% of the width of the front building elevation. And so that is looking at linear feet across. There's a photo under number seven.
Tell me what page that's on.
Page 20, right.
So the garage area, which is the dash line, that is going to be the area on the side of the garage, the garage width would be the arrow below the hole, it's got an arrow going either way.
And that, so the picture goes sort of with four, garage, the side should not constitute more than 50%. So now I guess I kind of get it on a two-story house, but do we really want more than a half of the front? I guess that's more a question for us, just to be a garage.
It probably is a question for you. I know that we do have, garages are a hot bug issue with developers. Oftentimes they do struggle to get a garage to meet those percentages. I will say that this ordinance advocates for less prominent garages. However, this part of the ordinance is not different in our requirements to what we've had before. We've broken it apart. We have included some additional garage requirements where they don't protrude 8P F now, where all you see when you're walking down the street are garages and scratches. But, but that is, that's a good question for you guys to decide.
Well, no, I'll go ahead. Maybe we can make a, if we decide to, I'll make the first motion for the primary fence gates and trim.
Mr. Hopper, I will say, this is more of a stopgap until we can do our complete rewrite with Optico's, the planning consultant. One of the areas we've asked them to do kind of a, pay additional attention to, or do a dive into, our garage doors. That has been something that we've highlighted since the beginning in the RFP process, that that was going to be important. So I'm not saying that it's not important to do now, because there's still homes being developed, but this is something that you do know we need to take a close look at with steering keys, that impacts what we want to do tonight.
We do have a motion by Mr. Hopper to amend ordinance 2513 about the privacy fence gates and adding the word trim. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any further discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2513?
I have, I have one question about that. Is this, is this amendment, would this make all privacy fence gates have to swing inward? Or is this just those along the bike and walkway, you know?
Just, just those that would interfere with pedestrian infrastructure is how we labeled it. So the way that I would interpret that is that if your gate is far enough back, which it really probably should be, we require that fences are two feet back from the sidewalk and typically near front yard, it's only going to be four feet tall and 50% transparent. Now, there are gates that are added to pre-existing fences that, above the sidewalk, and if it's a privacy fence that swings open past that two feet, or maybe it's a fence that's grandfathered in and is right up against the sidewalk, I've seen a few of those. If that's opening up, we've gotten reports, someone actually from the public reached out about this and talked about concerns for cyclists or joggers who push on a stroller or you can visually see someone, but if it is far enough back from the sidewalk, we would, we would not require it to open inward.
Okay, any other questions? Any further discussion? And then roll call the amendment to ordinance 2513.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Mancha. Aye. No.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance 2513 is amended on a vote of seven to zero. Any further discussion?
Do you have a sense on how many variances this will cut down on?
Yeah, I do have somewhat of a sense. I can't give you the seventy number. I did, I know, talked with Ms. Gibson today, I did send her an Excel document. It's maybe not fully cleaned up, but it shows variances since, I think it's 2021, 2024, and it's going to clean up a lot. It'll be a huge help to staff.
Appreciate you putting the, allowing the same material, being side by side. Appreciate that, because if you can't build two Red Brick houses right next to each other, what are we doing here? Mind you, I have two other, what's a fiber cement panel? How is that different from, cement's a term of art, I guess.
So we have fiber cement panels. These are, we have fiber cement boards, and it's basically fiber cement board, but it's more of a, like we have metal panels that we use. Some people will use panels of fiber cement. A lot of the building design standard changes, there looks to be a lot of new things in there. We actually had standards at the very end of our list that were kind of tacked on. It almost felt like an afterthought. Conditioners would never see those. And they would, we would say you can't have a fiber cement panel. They would say, it doesn't say that on the table. I'd say, well, look past the table. And I don't, I think that this will just be easier for developers when they come to agree with, know and understand what our expectations are. I don't, we don't frequently get asked for fiber cement panels. I think maybe we only have one.
I'm trying to think, in the neighborhood I grew up on, I feel like even my parents' house originally, I don't know if it's a fiber, but there may be four by four and you have trim around it. Is that sort of what we're trying to get rid of? Is that?
Yeah, they can be, there's a variety of sites that these fiber cement panels can come in. There, I'm trying to see if.
I don't know necessarily. I have a problem with that.
Maybe we don't. I will say it's more of a box here, what kind of, I mean, maybe that's okay.
Yeah, like what I picture is the street across, the house across the street was the same way. So it was all brick on the first level, second level, I think had, was probably, I don't, I don't even know if it was cement panels, but there were panels of some sort, and they had trim around the panels and different designs on there. It doesn't, doesn't really matter. Anyway, my last question for you, sorry.
The ones at Menards look like they are a bunch of fiber cement boards, but they come in a panel. So it's like a steel panel.
That's, yeah, that's a.
They're, you can get four by eight textured wood fiber cement panel siding. So it looks like, at least the one that Menards has, that I'm looking at right now.
These panels look more like Stelco kind of, that's, yeah. All right, it must have been a thing back in the seventies, eighties.
Yeah, I will say, I, really, we don't get this request from builders.
Last question, so rear elevations. So it says if it's, no, if it's viewed by common area from the street, it has to be 50% masonry. Is there a scenario where the front would be masonry, the back would be masonry, but the two sides would not be? Trying to envision that, because like side elevation says, if you have to have masonry on the side elevations, you got to do it all, right?
Is it, and this is for residential homes?
Yeah.
So in residential homes, we still do have our three paths. So the third path, you can actually have no masonry, but this would be more of a.
This is in path one, I'm thinking.
Path one.
Number three rear elevations.
Okay.
So number two on side elevations, it says, if it's required on side elevation, you got to put it everywhere. You got to put it on the rear too, and obviously on the fronts aren't going to be there. So I'm wondering if there's a scenario where somebody's going to build a house where they've got brick in the front, brick in the back, but then the sides are.
We ran across that once before, and at that time, we required a full brick wrap to avoid that, because we had some houses being built that had rear elevation and the front elevation brick, and then the sides were not.
So what you're referring to, Mr. Campbell, that is path two, and that is correct for path two. It is our most common path that builders select. That's a 36-inch masonry wings coat. And you're right, if you are facing a street through a common area or a park or a trail, instead of just this back and a front having that 36-inch masonry wings coat, all four sides do. For path one, it does appear that if the side elevation is required, then all sides are required. It does not appear that there is a requirement for a rear elevation. So I suppose if it was up through street and they were doing path one, they could have 50% on the front and 50% on the rear, and the two sides could have.
Any, any reservations if we clear that up?
No, I would, I think, I will, I will say, path one is typically not selected because it is more masonry than path two. So I wrote typically it goes with this 36-inch. So if, I don't even know if we've had a house come through at path one, but I would have no reservation if we were to say for rear elevations where more masonry is required on rear elevation, it shall be required on both side elevations and front elevation, on both sides, I guess.
I'll make a note. I'll second.
Right, we have a motion to amend ordinance 2513 to, that was Mr. Nelson just stated.
And that would be path one, number three.
Page 21.
All right. Motion of Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan. Any discussion on the motion to amend? And then the roll call on the motion to amend ordinance 2513, second.
Gibson. Aye. Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Mancha. Aye. No.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Ordinance 2513 is amended a second time on a vote of seven to zero. Any further discussion on ordinance 2513 as amended?
I have just a couple of things. Yeah, we talked, I don't know if that's something we need, I think you, there's a ear, or if that's something that, I don't, I think we, on the data centers, I'll just bring it up and, and, on page 10, there's, there's an addition to a special exception use, and they're adding data center, which seems to be kind of a wave of the future. And I didn't know a lot about it, so I started reading about it, and I noticed in the ordinance, it requires low-impact development. Features must be incorporated in the design, and I don't have a problem with that part of it. But it gives some examples, green roof, solar, water recycling, et cetera. And what I found at reading about data centers is the main concern is significantly a heavy water use. And I think it's, it's intended, you know, that point to be in, in areas where water's a problem, but they're talking about the thing can use hundreds of thousands of gallons of water if we don't require that they recycle that water.
The intent behind that, I know you mentioned some others, so maybe you. The intent behind that, I know you mentioned some others, so maybe you need to clarify that. It is the water consumption. You said thousands, it's actually millions. Millions of gallons of water a day. Uh, these data centers, okay, but what they're doing is there, some of these data centers are stressing communities, water providers, water supply. They, the, they can recycle. I know companies like Google do recycle their data center water. And they use the water for coolant. That's how they cool down their, their data center. Others do not, and they can use millions of gallons. But they do have to recycle it. They have to make sure that it's not contaminated. There's a lot, there's a little bit more. So it's cheaper for them to just go through millions, is why I believe some do it. So that was our intent there with the low-impact development. If we need to clarify that, I would have no issue.
We can always require that here when they come before us, because we know they're gonna come.
So my concern was, we ought to give them options, and they're gonna say, we're gonna go with the, we're gonna go with the grass roof. Instead of recycling our water, which is the cheapest route. Well, the reality is, that's, it's the water usage is the concern, and I didn't know if we needed to, and we could do it back here. I don't know. It's, yeah, it's the pleasure of the council.
Yeah, one thing, it's likely that it would see councils, so for our master listed uses, we did include data center as a special exception under industrial large. That is the only thing we included it under. The reason why we're putting it in the U-Stable is if you don't provide a spot, it really becomes a, a difficult thing to regulate, and it can end up being a spot that you might not want it to be. A special exception that would require a public hearing. And that would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It wouldn't necessarily go to council. But it would require a public hearing. And I know as part of the special exception criteria, they do have to read criteria about the, the environmental impact, stating that it will not be submerged, you know, damaged or harmed. I don't have the exact word right there. That would be one of the things that they are supposed to consider.
So if that is the intent, should we just put, yeah, so. I would say the low-impact development feature of water recycling, I don't know if that's the right wording for that amendment.
I, I think that gets the intent across. And those are, it's kind of an industry term that we maybe should have better defined. I, I know those in the data center industry looking to develop a data center will understand and know that.
Not that I think we've got people down our door with data centers here.
Yeah, well.
And shall we let them say no to what they make over here?
If I'm reading this right, in the right spot, it says, low-impact development features must be incorporated in designs. It gives examples of green roof, solar, water recycling, et cetera, so.
Are they saying we should require water?
Water recycling. I think the main concern with the data center is the water.
So not making an option, just say.
Just say it needs to, needs to include the low-impact development of water recycling. Must be incorporated, right?
We have a motion by Mr. Moan to amend ordinance twenty-five thirteen to require on page ten, section C one, where they add data center under low-impact development, that water recycling is required for data centers. Have a second. Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion with the council? Hearing another roll call on the amendment to ordinance twenty-five thirteen.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Manchip.
Aye.
Hough.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five thirteen is amended again on the vote of seven to zero. Any further discussion?
I have just one last question, very simple. Can I ask about the water again? Do we need, it's too late now, we've already amended it, but maybe, do we need to be more specific? I mean, sanitary water doesn't need to be, that can go into this.
I, I don't think that you'll, as long as I have this position, or, and I don't believe you'll ever hire someone else that will misinterpret that to not be the, the major, they don't have a lot of sanitary, I don't think they have many jobs for those data centers.
One employee, just making. Yes.
He's probably the most.
Mr. Moan, one more thing?
And one last thing, that on just page fourteen, D sixteen, we're deleting the subsection of on purposes directional signs. Are we taking away the ability for people to direct their traffic into their parking lot, or an in and an out? Or is that, what's the intent of us deleting that?
So the intent, and I'm glad you asked, that was a good question. We have the, for directional signs, we have them listed under signs required without a permit. And then we also have them listed under signs required with a permit. The requirements for those two signs, which are describing the same sign, are different. And so we have two different requirements. We have eliminated it in the location that you're referring to. And I don't personally think that they're always needed as long as they're small and they, they are not allowed to advertise. It's just a, a drive-through sign, would be a directional sign. And our requirement for the, the one that didn't require a permit was, they're different standards, so people are just choose the one that didn't require a permit.
All right. Any other questions, discussion, comments on ordinance twenty-five thirteen as amended? Hearing another roll call, ordinance twenty-five thirteen as amended.
Hopper.
Aye.
Manchip. Aye.
Hough.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
All right, ordinance twenty-five thirteen as amended passes on a vote of seven to zero. First reading, resolution twenty-five oh six.
The resolution of the Greenwood Council approving the Greenwood Public Libraries Issuance of Funds Sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Same with Mr. Moan. Any discussion? Hearing another roll call, resolution twenty-five oh six, first reading.
Thank you. Aye.
Hough.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five oh six passes first reading seven, zero. There is a request to suspend the rules through second reading. Do you have a motion on suspension through second reading? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Manchip. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing another roll call, resolution, suspension of the rules through second reading on resolution twenty-five oh six.
Hough.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Rules are suspended through second reading on a vote of seven to zero. Do you have a motion on second reading? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second. By Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Hearing another roll call, resolution twenty-five oh six, second reading.
Williams.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Manchip. Aye.
And Hough.
Aye. Resolution twenty-five oh six passes second reading seven, zero. Nothing under second reading tonight. New business, introduction to new ordinances or resolutions, resolution twenty-five oh eight.
The resolution declaring a certain area within the city of Greenwood, an economically revitalization area, qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. Sponsored by Campbell Hopper.
Hi, thanks for being here. I had a very great presentation. So, thanks for having me. All right, so I know we're just here for an introduction to council. Oh, sorry, yes, I apologize. Alexis Cowder, Director of Client Services with KSM Location Advisors. Here at the scene, presenting a Thompson Thrift project for your consideration, realizing that we're not taking a public speaking. But formally introducing this project to you all as council, here before RBC earlier, I guess that was just last week. And so are here this evening to talk about, it keeps going, to before tonight, I don't know. So I'm, I'm here, our client is Thompson Thrift. I do want to recognize that Andrew Emel, Vice President of Industrial Development with Thompson Thrift is here in the audience. So when we wrap this up, and if you've got any questions, he or I are happy to do so. So for those of you who are not familiar with Thompson Thrift, they are a, they're locally based, locally founded. They are privately held real estate development and investment company that do projects on a national scale. So they've been in business for nearly forty years. Like I said, founded in Terre Haute, we've got additional offices here in Indianapolis, Phoenix, Houston, Denver. In that forty-year span, they've conducted projects across industry, across the nation, twenty-three states, totaling nearly six billion dollars in, in development costs, and nationally employ plus seven hundred team members. So the project that we are presenting here this evening is an industrial speculative development project. It's two buildings to be located there at the northeast quadrant of I sixty-five and Main Street. Already got a lot of industrial development that surrounds this particular parcel. But these two buildings, you can kind of see building A and B, they're, they would be developed simultaneously. Both of them are going to be on the smaller end of speculative development. I think that's really kind of the important piece to take away here this evening. We've got some market data to present to you to just kind of give you some, give you some scope on the demand for this size product here and kind of looking at the market. But again, just to give you a visual room location, and then where these buildings are proposed to be developed there on that parcel. So again, what we're asking you all to consider would be property tax abatement associated with the development of these two buildings there at the northeast quadrant of I sixty-five and Main Street. For both buildings, total estimated real estate investment would be twenty-two point, roughly twenty-two point five million dollars. Currently, you've got a, you've got a site there that has the one, the two improved structures on there. So that's bringing in a current annual property tax liability, just a little shy of five thousand per year. I know that you all are very well versed in all things development and abatement. So don't need to necessarily tell you all, but also like to get on the record that the abatement itself is not a benefit to Thompson Thrift, right? This is going to be something that flows through to the eventual occupiers of this space. And over the course of ten years, that, that abates real property taxes roughly fifty percent. So doing the math there on just kind of estimated A and B, property taxes to be paid are just a little over two million, both paid and abated over the term of the abatement. So this was some of that market data that I referred to. Really just kind of wanted to give you guys a sense in terms of Thompson County itself, the supply, demand of spec space. Overall, right, you can see that demand is rebounding. The market does have some elevated vacancy, but that's for generally a larger product. As we start to kind of narrow the square footage of these tech facilities down to less than two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, and then even further, less than a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, which again, that's what both of these proposed developments, that's kind of the bucket that it'll fall in, right? You know, anything less than a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, you, yes, you've got some declining absorption, you see that there in those red numbers. But at the end of the day, it is a very tight market. You've got a very low vacancy rate, and you don't have construction in the pipeline. Overall takeaway, there's just a lack of available space for this particular size of product. So at the end of the day, I mean, KSM Location Advisors were site selectors, and so how this really kind of ends up fitting into this, again, this, this size development, how this ends up fitting into Greenwood's economic development and marketing strategy, it really kind of all goes into the fact that you're refusing risk for potential occupiers who are looking for this size space. So when you've got development in the pipeline, you've got finished product that's ready to go, you're, you're going to be able to attract companies who are in somewhat advanced industries who are looking to, again, just really short timing speed of market. And you've got sites that are ready to go, to develop for, you know, looking to be some howl projects here in Greenwood. They are speculative developments, so we can't totally guarantee what the occupiers will be and, and the exact types of jobs and number of jobs and wages. But at the end of the day, you would assume that the occupiers who are going to, you know, consider this space are going to be seeking a good labor draw, which Greenwood has certainly access to, to be under shape and that type of infrastructure. And again, I think just the occupiers of this space, you're not going to get your big distribution type users in this size of a facility, right? At the end of the day, you're going to be considering projects kind of in that category, manufacturing, life assembly, life sciences, those tech-focused type stuffers are the ones that will look at this type product. So kind of wrapping that all up, we are, I know we're just introducing it to this evening, and we're not taking a formal vote. But we are going to be asking for your support of a ten-year real property tax abatement on both of these developments. Again, Thompson Thrift, they're, they're national, they're very credible, forward-thinking developer. They've got plenty of demonstrated success. At the end of the day, this project really is kind of positioned Greenwood to attract some, some high-growth and innovative driven companies that are looking incentive in the end, right? Not to mention, again, just the tax, the overall tax revenue that these two facilities would, would be generating in terms of real property taxes generated on the improvements. So with that said, Andrew and I, like I said up here, I know we're just interviewing, but are having to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions from the council?
I have a couple. I assume Thompson Thrift has built similar spec buildings before?
They have. Andrew could probably speak in terms of the markets themselves. I know you're active in everything.
And the follow-up question would be, I know you build a spec building, you're going to market it. I know she mentioned manufacturing, bioscience, but what companies have you been able to market to in the past? And what companies do you think you might try to pitch your buildings to at present?
Good evening, Andrew Emel, Thompson Thrift. I guess your first question, we do have two projects going on right now in the Phoenix market. As Alexis said, we have an office out in Phoenix, very small, similar product size. One, one project, three buildings, a square footage ranging from seventy-eight thousand to ninety thousand square feet. It's in Mesa, Arizona, along the Tech Corridor. And so, you know, we are attracting a lot of the manufacturing, assembly, different uses that are not your typical distribution. I would point to that site plan. As you can see, it is two buildings with a shipped truck for, and typically your bigger box buildings that have the, the distribution users, they require a lot of heavy trailer storage, semi-trailers. We don't have that for this, this site, so we really can't, you know, accommodate a user like that. So it is speculative, so we don't have any users right now. You know, our job would be, or our strategy would be to hire real estate brokers and have them go out and, you know, procure the tenants there. But more than likely, it's, it's going to fall into light manufacturing with the interstate exposure there. I do think it offers an opportunity, creating a showroom opportunity for a contractor, some sort of foreign contractor or whatnot. So definitely opens the door for more variety of users.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. We've had some other projects that have looked at this location. And right across, directly across the street is a truck stop.
Yep.
And it was my understanding that you weren't going to have any traffic coming out onto Main Street, that you would be taking it out the back.
Yes, that is correct. We got that, we had a call early on with Gabe and the staff. And that was very, that was a recommendation that they would not support any type of access from Main Street. So this is an oversight plan, so this is showing that, but yes, we, our, our access point would be along. Sorry.
Greenwood.
Well, the, this, this road back here is east west, Cheney Avenue, totally covered, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, miscellaneous business, this second opportunity for members of the public to address the council. This time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, there's a five-minute timer per person. Seeing done, then miscellaneous business from the council, we have some CF ones, consideration. Uh, any concerns before we get into these?
The way this reads, it's like they just picked up shop and ran off. They're building with them, uh, because it's only got. Cost was down to one point six million, just think, so, and then, six jobs left. Fifty-three last year, or seventy-three last year, now they're down to eight. I guess that's my question.
And it is last year?
Yeah. Wow. A little bit countable, they should have waited before it goes out. Before we, before we voted on this, I guess, I don't know. Uh, so that's my question, if somebody could.
Alright.
Clarify that for me, I appreciate that.
You wanted to hold off?
Yeah.
Alright, um. On, I do have a question on, uh, numbers three through ten. Just to, Mr. Wright, can you explain, they all seem to have the same, information under their SB one, but then everything's, is this that building where there was one abatement and multiple tenants and that?
Yes, so this is the, the office building, uh, I believe it's overall, airport parkway, where they, uh, basically split it into eight parcels after it was done. So that's why they're all on the same, uh, resolution number. Uh, but those are all of the different tenants slash owners of each of those eight parcels now.
Okay. I don't know if it's easier to do it that way or the way that number twelve did it, because that one is all on the same, got three things, but it's all on the same spreadsheet. I don't know which one's more helpful or harmful or simpler.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, any other questions before we get started? Alright, we will skip number one, number two.
I'll find number two in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number three in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number four in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number five in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number six in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number seven in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number eight in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number nine in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number ten in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number eleven in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
Uh, I'll just note, I'm number twelve, I, I don't know that I noted it anywhere else. Um. Jobs numbers are kind of weird. So nine or ten jobs. Uh. I'm looking at here too, but this same applies to year three, nine, twenty-three, and then total jobs eighteen. Last time I checked, nine and twenty-three was thirty-two, not eighteen, so I don't. I don't know where these numbers are coming from exactly, same thing, fourteen, eleven, twenty, but anyway. Uh, the investment appears to be the eight point five million that they promised. Assuming you add up the jobs, that they say total jobs, there's more than thirty-three digits on us, so I will find number twelve in substantial compliance.
Motion, Mr. Hopper.
Long story short.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find number thirteen in substantial compliance.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Moan, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. Alright, anything else from the council? Any for the Corporation Council?
Nothing.
Hearing the controller?
Nothing.
Nothing from the mayor, so we are adjourned.